Those are mine.
Oh, this is yours? I thought I was supposed to give it to somebody tomorrow.
We'll find out if you have things. I had to go and get my own, too. Okay. Okay, thank you for joining us. I'll go ahead and get tonight or this afternoon's meeting started. For the record, it is Tuesday, April 11th, my son's birthday. It's 3:00. We'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh. Councilmember Mylum. Councilmember Palmer. Councilmember Little Roberts. Councilmember Borton. Councilmember Byrd. Mayor DeVeard.
Here. Item number two is a pledge of allegiance. If you all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we approve the agenda as published.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda's published. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes motion carried. Item four is a consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh. Councilmember Mylum. Councilmember Palmer. Councilmember Little Roberts. Councilmember Borton. Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
All ayes motion carried. Item five, there were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move right into our community presentations, starting with 6A with an annual update from the Meridian Development Corporation. Thank you for joining us, Dan.
Thank you, Mary Tammy. President Byrd, members of city council, it's always a pleasure to be back before you to give the report for the Meridian Development Corporation. Before I do, however, I want to thank you for adding our two new members, Diane Bevan and Steve Lasek. They're going to be welcome additions to our board. Thank you so much for that action last week. You should have the report, the written report, and the financial audit statement in your packet. In terms of my report, the city of Meridian was developed from a small rural village to an incorporated city by the dedicated work of its citizens who volunteered their time and contributed their resources to build a community. This spirit of volunteerism and building community based on common goals still exists today. Nowhere is it more evident than in our historic downtown. The revitalization of our downtown core was and continues to be the vision of the Meridian City Council and the many citizen stakeholders who value the historic and economic value of a vibrant downtown. By establishing the Meridian Development Corporation as the urban renewal agency for the revitalization of the downtown core, tax increment dollars could be used to upgrade downtown infrastructure and remove any blight so that downtown could continue to be economically viable and, most importantly, a source of historic pride for all citizens. Another goal was to make sure that downtown with City Hall as the center of city government was accessible to young and old alike. Our downtown embodies the culture and history of Meridian for our children. During 2016, the Meridian Development Corporation continued the progress made in prior years to revitalize downtown and the urban core. Partnerships have been the key to the promotion of activities for everyone in Meridian to enjoy. MDC partnered with the West Ada School District and the Meridian Arts Commission to wrap electrical boxes with student art. For the second year in a row, approximately 1,500 Meridian third graders supervised by their teachers and parent volunteers were able to experience the historic walking tour and learn about city government with MDC, the West Ada School District, and the city of Meridian as partners. The Meridian Parks and Recreation Department partnered with MDC to replace trees in new graded wells to enhance streetscape and allow trees to thrive. Summer concerts on Broadway and City Hall Plaza were expanded from three to four concerts, which included pre-shows featuring student musician performers. Concerts on Broadway is a partnership among the Meridian Arts Commission, the City of Meridian Parks and Recreation Department, many private sponsors, and MDC. This summer saw the development of the youth farmer's market in City Hall Plaza, which was held from 9:00 a.m. to noon on Saturdays from June to September. This partnership between the city of Meridian, MDC, and private sponsors also included young vendors and their families. A special thank you to the family-owned Cackleberry Farm for support and great farm products throughout the summer. Idaho Avenue between Main Street and East Second Street was dedicated as a lighter, quicker, cheaper, outdoor seating venue and was used as a focal point for the first annual art walk and sidewalk chalk art displays in September. A special thank you to Marty Schindler, local businessman, and the city planning staff for championing the Idaho Avenue project. 2016 was also the year when downtown branding came to fruition with signs and banners and six kiosks designating Meridian Historic Downtown as our downtown core. Economic growth was also visible with the development of two key projects. First, Marty Schindler converted the former chocolate shop into a location for Blue Sky Bagels on Idaho Avenue. And our thanks to Josh Everts for not only renovating the building on the corner of Idaho Avenue and East Second Street, but keeping its historic roots with a facade reminiscent of the original bank building. Josh calls the venue "The Vault," and it has been used for many public and private gatherings. Frankie's Java took over the location formerly used by the grotto and added to outdoor seating in Generations Plaza. A special thanks to the Meridian Downtown Business Association for providing a way for local businessmen and property owners to give input to the city of Meridian and MDC regarding downtown needs and activities. A special thank you to Joe Kozlowski, local attorney and businessman, who has served as business association president for the past two years. As one of the fastest-growing cities in the United States, Meridian is always encouraging economic development to support its citizens. In 2016, the Meridian City Council approved the formation of the Ten Mile Urban Renewal Area as an agency under the Meridian Development Corporation. The urban renewal designation has allowed private developers to convert acres of former farmland into a commercial center whose borders include I-84, Ten Mile Road, and Franklin Avenue. Anyone exiting Ten Mile Road will notice the construction of office buildings in what will soon be the commercial area that includes retail as well as office space. Work near where you live is making Meridian a complete city as it converts former farmland to homes and businesses. A special thanks to Bruce Chatterton and the Meridian Economic Development and Planning Office for making Ten Mile become a reality. Reports about the progress at Ten Mile can be heard at MDC meetings on the second and fourth Wednesdays of each month. The second Wednesday meeting is held at 7:30 a.m. and the fourth Wednesday meeting is held at 4:00 p.m., with all meetings, of course, open to the public. Just like long ago, volunteers still constitute the prime resource for the development of Meridian. The MDC Board of Commissioners for 2016 was composed of the following volunteers: Dave Winder, Nathan Mueller, Jim Escobar, Keith Byrd, Mayor Tammy DeVeard, Callie Zamzo, Rob McCarville, Rick Ritter, and myself. In addition, Eric Jensen, Kit Fitzgerald, and Calvin Barrett served part of the year. A very special thank you to Jim Escobar for serving as our chairperson for the last three years and for his eight years of service on the commission board. As Esop said in his famous fable of the tortoise and the hare, "Slow and steady wins the race." The revitalization of Meridian Historic Downtown is happening because volunteer citizens are stepping forward and making it happen. It is also happening because more children and their families are becoming participants in downtown activities. 2017 is already promising to be another banner year in the slow and steady race of progress. I would recommend that you take annual photographs of our downtown to record the history of its continuing development, especially this coming year. As this council well knows, none of the policy that you enact could be implemented without dedicated city staff in all departments. This is also true for MDC. We need to express our gratitude to our legal counsel Todd Lakey and our administrator Ashley Squires, who implement our resolutions with their outstanding expertise. Thank you to everyone who has worked and supported the development of our Meridian Historic Downtown and the work of the Meridian Development Corporation. We look forward to another productive year in downtown Meridian in 2017, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Council, any questions? Very thorough.
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor.
Always great to be here.
Ms. Mylum.
I don't have any questions for you, Dan, but this is so much you guys have going on, so kudos to you guys. I'm thinking, I'm listening to you and looking through all these pictures, I'm still not even through the packet, so.
Thank you so much.
Good job, and thanks a lot.
It is. A lot of things have been happening. I think this coming year, as I said, is going to be an outstanding year. We have some great projects coming up, one right here on the corner, which we hope to see starting pretty soon. And pretty soon, the Pine Avenue project will be starting, as well as sidewalk replacement, there are a number of great things that are going to be happening this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item 6B is under our Western Ada Recreation District, so I'll turn this to Charlie. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I can't tell you what a pleasure it is to be on this side of the dais. But I do miss the opportunity to work with each and every one of you on a weekly basis, and I miss the opportunity to work with the wonderful staff of the city of Meridian. But I'm here today for several items. One, I'm going to give you an update on the pool renovation and building that's going on. I think you may have all noticed that there's a rather large structure now in Story Park that's a bit like ocean blue or something of that nature. That is a total reconstruct of the building infrastructure at the pool. The building now will contain new equipment room, it has a training room for lifeguards, it has an office for the pool manager, it has an overview deck for patrons to watch folks swim in the pool, it has a concession room, it has a number of storage spaces for tables and chairs that can be used in a conference facility that can be divided into two conference rooms or training, and it will also house the office for Western Ada Recreation District. So that's all new. We anticipate that that should be done before the end of May. We're about a month behind, but they pick up a little bit every couple weeks. Hopefully, we will be open for training and staff introduction to the pool the first part of May, and we've got our fingers crossed that we'll be open for business, the day school is out doing lessons and having open swim. One thing we did do with the pool, we completely replaced and expanded the deck. We took away the diving, the high dive, which is going to be traumatic to a lot of the young folks that use the pool, but we are replacing that with a three-meter diving platform.
Wow.
So that should be rather entertaining for the kids. We also expanded our mechanical to accommodate six additional lap lanes at some point in time in the future. And with the high schools now endorsing and having swimming as a part of their athletic program, we anticipate a need for more lap lanes and possibility of exploring that in the near future. Again, it's been a long winter for all of us. We would have hoped to have been a little closer to being done by now, but we believe we're going to be okay and we're going to be running as usual. We will have a new pool manager, which we just hired yesterday. And as any of these kinds of projects go, on a daily basis, I get an email or a phone call that, well, guess what? Something on the plans changed or something is worn out that we thought we could use and the price goes up on a continual basis. It started at a $2.8 million project, it's now over $3 million. And that's why I'm here today. When we started the pool, we missed an opportunity in requesting the city to relieve us of the soft costs of the permitting process. And I'm here today to ask if there is a will to relieve us of that burden by paying that back. I have a figure here of $35,828.95. I believe that's our total permit fee, so it includes some hard costs that the city has to bear. But I'm here to request whatever the soft cost of that amount is, and I don't have anything in our records that would differentiate what the hard and soft costs are. So I'm requesting today, if, out of the goodness and the precedence that you've been following of late, that you, as opposed to relieve us from paying that, to refund that. I'm also here to inform you today that we're making improvements in our park, and hopefully we'll be doing something this fall in the park. We have plans for a new restroom facility, which is desperately needed out there. What we have is old, it was barely serviceable when it was new. It will be torn down and replaced with a new restroom facility of a modern nature and one that we believe we can keep open year-round, and that's our intent. And I'm also here to request, in advance of that, relief of the soft cost of the building permit process for that particular project. So are there any questions of me, I hope? Because I like to answer them and I really like to ask them, as you all know.
Thank you. I guess, Bruce, have you had a chance to have your team look at these and tell us what the amount for the soft costs are?
Yes. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, you should have a memo.
We do.
We do.
Authored by Bruce Freckleton in front of you. So maybe just go over, I'll go over very quickly. Again, this is along the lines of what you all chose to waive for the YMCA facility and before that, the Boys and Girls Club. We have public works fees in terms of total plan review and an amount of $368 even. Then we had building division fees, that's commercial permit review, things like fire plan review, plumbing, all those add up to $26,095.2. And Charlie mentioned the soft costs. A portion of that roughly $26,000 would be paid to our contractors. That is, we, as Charlie noted, we have to pay to our contractors.
No, no, no.
Roughly $12,000 of that total amount. And so the soft cost would be the difference between those two. I'm showing $13,829. I see Councilmember Byrd shaking his head. Is there something I?
Well, what we've got on here, Madam Mayor, what we've got on here is the soft cost is $26,000. $12,265 is the hard cost.
You are absolutely right.
And so what, if we are to do like we did with the YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, and other ones before that, the soft cost is $26,095.2.
Councilmember Byrd, you're absolutely right. The soft costs are $26,000. Thank you for correcting that.
You know, I guess, is this consistent with what we do with the school district in Ada County Highway District?
Yes.
And because these are other governmental agencies that get citizen taxpayer dollars just like we do, and that's what we've done with these other entities, is to waive those costs because it all comes from the same taxpayer. So it's consistent with what we've done with the other governmental agencies, and I guess I'd ask if there are any further questions, any questions for Charlie or any thoughts, comments?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Charlie, you mentioned that you were also requesting for the park, but we don't have those fees in here yet, correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Roberts, you don't, we don't. We don't have an initial engineering estimate of what it's going to cost. Probably be several hundred thousand dollars, but we don't have a number at this point. We have preliminary plans, hope to have plans finished this summer and bids out this fall.
We're kind of in a situation where we can address these and maybe address those at a later date?
Madam Mayor, that would be great, just knowing that there's an opportunity to do that, we can come back.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
The several hundred thousand is the cost of the restroom, not the fees.
Yeah, not the fees.
I saw Ralph.
That's the cost of the restroom, yeah.
Shake his head a little bit.
That's the basis for the fees, yeah.
Madam Mayor, one other question. How do you add six lanes to a pool? Do you re-dig it and make it wider or what?
We plumbed the mechanics to accommodate the additional six lap lanes. They would be built to the west side of the pool, and there's room there to accommodate six lanes.
Well planned.
That would be awesome. I think you already overschedule your facility with lessons and the use force for the more regimented swim, not swim playtime, but swim lessons and use of it.
Madam Mayor, our goal is to teach as many swim lessons as we can because of water safety. That's our mission, and any time that we're not training folks, and it doesn't, it isn't just the children, it's adults, we have adult swim lessons as well. We try to have an opportunity for people to enjoy it either through pool parties or open swim, but you're right, the time for that is limited.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I don't know how many more permits that are going to come from the Western Ada District, but is this something the council would like us to work in an agreement like we have with the Highway District and the School District? And then you wouldn't have to come back each time, but whatever your pleasure. Have the models.
Certainly be consistent. Yes, Ms. Mylum.
I believe that if, this is a precedent that we've set with other governmental agencies using our same taxpayer dollars, then it makes sense to have a similar type of agreement
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
If you don't have any more questions or comments, I would make a motion that we reimburse Western Ada Recreation District a sum of $26,095.2 and also have our legal department drop an agreement so that any future permit fees required from Western Ada District, as long as it is in the same realm as building permits, soft costs, that we get an agreement between the two.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do you want to restate that motion?
No.
Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, while it's the same pool of taxpayers, it's not the same pool of tax dollars, pun intended. The Community Development Department does a great job of keeping up with the public and private sector projects that have to make their way through their office, but to adequately take care of them, they need more staff. And every time we waive fees, it becomes more and more difficult to fund additional staff for our growing city as the Community Development Department is going to need as we continue to grow. And so, like with the, while the precedent has been set, I feel like while they're called soft costs because they're just our staff time, it's still money being spent on our staff that are tax dollars anyway. And so if we're to be able to adequately take care of future projects, we need to not always be waiving fees. We've got to find a way to pay for this. I'm against it.
Any other comments or discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer. Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we'll put the money to good use.
We know. You've been a valued partner and certainly have provided community service that the city has long said, "It's not ours, it's yours," and you do a very good job. We're so glad you do it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Before Charlie leaves, one thing some of the councilmen here probably don't realize is our little league of baseball and stuff, if it wasn't for Western Ada, we wouldn't have ballparks. We certainly didn't have it in Meridian until 2000. 2003 or 2004. Fuller Park is completely Westernated, and they're the ones, and Mr. Roundtree's one of the leaders of getting those ballparks in, and that's where our kids got to play ball, or we wouldn't have had a Little League program.
Well, we appreciate your time here, and do you want to give an update on something else?
Or fees?
No, Madam Mayor, just.
Okay.
Mr. Roundtree?
Thank you.
Yes.
I've got a question. Being on the other side of the deal now, not being part of the city and having to go through the permitting service, how was the permitting, in your opinion?
Well, it has some room for improvement, both as an applicant and on the part of the city. So if you want to engage in that conversation, I'd be glad to come in and do it at another time.
Certainly, I will take you up on that offer, and I can have my office work with you on your schedule.
Okay. It's very busy, Madam Mayor.
What's that, with your schedule?
Yes.
We will work around it.
Out of town a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
Okay, and 6C is under our Meridian Arts Commission. Thank you for joining us, Hillary.
Hi. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm before you today with a budget amendment, basically asking for spending authority for revenues that the Meridian Arts Commission has received. So we received contributions from the Meridian Development Corporation for concerts on Broadway, and contribution from local business, Brian Ideas, to help support and sponsor a traffic box, and they're actually the traffic box vendor, so they only supported their, the artist's cost, and they are not charging us the cost of wrapping that box. But those are our revenues, so the actual budget amendment is zero dollars. We're just requesting spending authority for revenues received. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum?
Seeing none, I move that we approve the budget amendment for contributions towards concerts on Broadway and traffic box art for spending authority not to exceed $10,300.
Again.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bird?
Aye.
All eyes wish carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Hillary.
Okay, we'll move to department reports, and turn this over to Todd Lavoie for our annual department update from Finance.
Madam Member, members of the council, again, we appreciate this time and opportunity to present to you our annual strategic update and kind of a year in review for you. Today, we will present to you, I guess, who we are, the Finance Department, what we do for you, and why, the expectations that we put on ourselves of the Finance Department, go-overs our achievements and our accomplishments, kind of the year in review. We'll discuss to you some of our goals, our challenges going forward, and then we'll touch on three strategic plan objectives that we're the lead department on, and then we'll stand for any questions. So with that, we start off with who we are. Now, I get the honor to present who we are. I can tell you right now that you have 16 strong professional individuals that work in the Finance Department. The individuals are strong, they're professional, they take pride in what they do on a daily basis. The team enjoys working with each other, they enjoy working with the rest of this team, and I think you can hopefully see those results when you interact with them on a daily basis. The team stands strong with each other, they help each other's, they help other team members out on a daily basis, and they extend their hand out to others when they are in need. So again, I get that honor to show the great team that we have, and with that, this is the team that you currently have at the Finance Department. And we are made up of four divisions. We have the Accounting Division. The Accounting Division has been led by Rita Cunningham for a number of years. She has four accountants that report to her. We've got Karen, Barb, Courtney, and Amy. They do the accounting functions for the city. We have Jenny Field, she's the lone wolf in the Budget Department. We have the Purchasing Division, managed by Keith Watts, and we have a new employee, Sandra Ramirez. She's not here, I was going to introduce her, but we have a new employee, next time I'll introduce you to her, but she's a new addition to our Purchasing Division. And then we have, last but not least, we have the Utility Billing Division, managed by Carrie Glenn, and she has six individuals that work for her. And again, we have a new name on that list, that's Pam Lada. She is not here either, but we'll introduce you the next time she's here as well. But again, I'm, you know, I get the honor of telling you that you have 16 great Finance Department staff members, in my biased opinion, hopefully you agree, but again, that's who we are as a team for you on a daily basis. So again, what do we do for the city? Again, this is a general list of what we do for the city on a daily basis. Again, our customers are not only the mayor, but also you council members, there are fellow staff members, there are our citizens, our business partners. Again, we have many customers. The customers themselves, we have to deliver professional services to, not only on a daily basis, but in many forms, from complex to simple. Again, our goal is to be adaptive to the ever-changing environment and make sure we exceed the expectations of all our customers on a daily basis. So with that, the Utility Billing Division. In the Utility Billing Division, as you know, they manage 33,000 customers these days. Since 2003, that's about 100% increase. The city has grown just a little bit, as you all know, I'm not telling you anything you don't. The Utility Billing Division is responsible for making sure that all the invoices are sent to you, the property owners, correctly. I believe all of you have a home here, and hopefully the invoices are sent to you correctly. Our job is to make sure that happens. Our job is also to make sure that we collect the revenues that we receive off the invoices correctly. Last year, that department, that division was responsible for managing $22 million in receipts. So again, they are responsible for that on a daily basis. They are also responsible for the utility services management, so they are working in conjunction, kind of the middleman between you, the customer, and our Water and Sewer Division. If you need something, you work with them to make sure that the services are sent to your house to meet your needs on daily basis. And then last but not least, we have customer relations. We have 33,000 customers, each customer is unique, we have to make sure we work with Ada County, other intergovernmental agencies to make sure the property is in the right name, make sure the transactions occur. Every time we sell a house in the city of Meridian, the Utility Billing Division has to do something. Every time we change a rent or to some extent, the Utility Billing Division has to do something. So again, you see a lot of transactions involved with not only ownership, but also renters on a daily basis. So those are the whats we do, again, you know, why we're doing this. We want to make sure that we provide all 33,000 customers with the professional customer service that they deserve. We also need to make sure we assist any questions that they have in relations to their services, be it water, sewer, or trash. Our goal is to provide the customers on a daily basis the best professional service that we can. As I stated, the city has grown since 2003 by 100% for account growth, and I can tell you that since then, the city has added one FTE in the Utility Billing Division. During that time since 2003, the city has worked hard to implement efficiencies both in software and processes, to limit our requests for FTEs. But I can, I'll stand here and plant the seed now that you will see from us a request in 2018 for an employee. It's been a while since we've added an employee, but we've seen the account growth, and we've seen policy decisions kind of lead in a direction that we want to plan for. Be it from the 10 Mile Urban Renewal Agency, to the request to the Enterprise Fund to develop $5 to $10 million of utility infrastructure to the south. When we see those policy decisions, we need to prepare our staff members with the tools that they need to manage the development, the growth, both in residential and commercial that are coming down the line for Utility Billing Division. Again, they touch all of our customers, both commercial and residential, on a daily basis. So if we're promoting this growth, we're expanding to the north, to the south, to the west, to the east, we will be submitting a request to you for an FTE in fiscal year 2018 to help us manage the growth that has occurred since 2003 and where we're going in the future. So with that, we'll jump into purchasing. Purchasing is managed by two individuals, they've been that way since 2006. They are in charge of your procurement and contract services needs on a daily basis. Again, procurement or the purchasing division, their two members are there to make sure the city stays out of trouble with procurement law, contract law. They are one of the compliance departments within the city, along with legal and other agencies. They are there to assist all the city staff members with the needs that go along with procurement and contract management. Since 2006, I'll give you some more fun facts for you, we've added 162 employees that are eligible for procurement requests, and we've added zero in our procurement purchasing division. So with that, similar to utility billing, as we hear the policy decisions about developing the northwest corridor, i.e. the Chitting Corridor, the Tree Farm, the Dowby Park, we know there's growth occurring. We need to make sure we establish ourselves in a positive position. So again, I'll plant the seed that in 2019, you'll hear from us requesting money for software to automate the budget, or automate the bid procurement process. We believe software can be utilized instead of adding FTEs to improve our efficiencies over the next 10 years, to account for the expected growth. With all the development and construction, we're going to have requests from many departments to, you know, construct and establish the necessary infrastructure for the city for the next 10 years. So again, just planting the seed, in 2019, you'll hear from us again. And the next number of items within the Finance Department is what we call the Accounting Division. Rita is the manager of this division, she oversees the, let's see, where are we, the Accounting Division, she oversees the payroll, the AP General.
Yeah, what does she do? I just don't know.
We're going to answer that hopefully for you here soon. Yes, it's a good question, though. So she oversees payroll, AP General, accounting, audit, compliance, and reporting, and then, like I said, they have a team of five that do this for you on a daily basis. Again, the Accounting Division is here to provide its customers with information, guidance, professional services on a daily basis. The team is driven to meet the demanding requirements established by the governing bodies by educating and assisting all city staff members. The accounting team works very hard to manage the city finances in a professional manner, and by, at the end of the day, to deliver you, the council, a clean audit on an annual basis. A few of the departments I will touch on is real quick, is payroll. Payroll Department has been managed by Barb Nielsen for 10 years. She is the only person that we have in our payroll division, and she has managed the payroll department by herself for the last 10 years, which is amazing. She works with IT to develop efficiencies every year so that we can keep that one FTE for payroll, instead of asking you for FTEs. The Accounts Payable Department, again, managed by one person since 1996. This year, we currently have Amy Rose as our one Accounts Payable Manager per se. She works with about a dozen staff members throughout the city to facilitate and orchestrate the Accounts Payable on a weekly basis. Again, using technology and efficiencies, we've been able to keep that to one FTE in the Finance Department. And then last but not least is our Budget Division. Jenny Fields is our current Budget Analyst, and she is very involved right now with the budget, as you all know. She is the lone wolf in this case to manage and orchestrate and facilitate the annual budget with you and with all the staff members in the city. So again, hopefully you hear from what we're doing and why we're doing what we're doing. Again, this slide here shows some other professional services that we provide the city on a daily basis. These items in blue represent what we've provided from a professional standpoint over the last 12 months. From a financial cost perspective, we worked with the Enterprise Fund in looking at the idea of taking on the utility infrastructure at the wastewater treatment plant, instead of leasing the equipment from Idaho Power. We worked with them on that decision. Every year, we work with the Enterprise Fund with their rate model. We work with departments to analyze their fees. I could tell you that Rita and Courtney Kluckin, our accountant, are working on a fee development management program where we will be more involved with establishing and reviewing fees on a more regular basis. Again, you'll hear more about that in the future. School Resource Officer Analysis, we have another accountant, Karen Waddell. She worked hand-in-hand with the Police Department and the mayor to develop and design contract agreements between the city and the school districts for school resource officers. A couple of Business Model Analysis, we did one for the courthouse, and we also do an annual vehicle maintenance facility analysis. And then some financial auditing, we help with contract discrepancies by researching the details within contracts. We look at utility usage discrepancies and also help with any audits. In this case, last year, we worked on a grant audit. So again, those are the things, those are the items, those are the professional skills that we provide you as a Finance Department, to you, council, but also to the city citizens and the city staff on a daily basis.
Todd, were you not going to explain your joke?
I was not.
Because I think only accounting people understand it.
If you play the game, you understand it. Thank you, Luke. We got one, appreciate it. So as, following the agenda, expectations from us. You know, we expect a lot from us, with all the services defined and what we do and why we do them. Again, this is the mission statement that the Finance Department follows on a daily basis. You know, our goal is to meet the highlighted words on this on a daily basis with all customer interactions, not only with you, but also the citizens, business partners, city staff, and with each other. This statement here helps us understand why we show up every day and makes, you know, it's our drive to make sure this happens with every interaction. Again, we believe that we meet these expectations on a daily basis, and we hope you guys can agree with that. If not, please let us know. Our goal is to be there for you and exceed any expectations that you have on a daily basis. So again, the Finance Department takes a great pride in obtaining a clean audit. We work hard on that, we're demanding, but again, we appreciate everybody's assistance in getting that clean audit. Mr. Bird's been here, I guess he has the longest tenure here, and I think he has guided us in making sure that we always deliver the city in a clean audit, and we take a lot of pride in that, and we're, our goal is to always maintain that. Even after Mr. Bird retires, we will contain or maintain your mentality to always deliver to the city and its citizens a clean audit on an annual basis. So as our mission statement, oops, apologize, as our mission statement states, "Finance is committed to providing financial and customer service at our highest standards to those that we serve," and hopefully you guys see that on a daily basis. So following the agenda, the achievements, the accomplishments. We are calling this the Year in Review, or Budget Dollars at Work. These are the items that have occurred since we've last spoke to you, from a year ago. So again, customer service improvements, you're going to see this a lot. Hopefully, you see this improvement daily, and we will continue to work on this every single day. That is why we're here. We're here to service all of our customers, and we're going to be the best at it that we can. Okay, this next one, this one's pretty cool. You guys know probably more about bills and legislature.
Ah, someone's just back.
Ah, so you just got back too, perfect. Again, this one's cool. The Bill, Senate Bill 1074. Keith Watts, our purchasing manager, has been working hard for the last couple of years. He's been working with the state, the city, the different cities, the AIC, various agencies on a daily, weekly, monthly basis for the past couple of years. on a daily, weekly, monthly basis for the past couple of years. And I'll go straight to the, straight to the end. I could tell you right now that Keith Watts was the lead on this. He worked very hard with this, and he got legislation passed at the state. Now, you probably all know how hard that's to do. Keith worked very hard. He just got back from the Capitol, taking, I think it was a signature and a photo with Governor Otter, with the signature of Senate Bill 1074. And from what I understand, he also only received one nay from the House and the Senate on this legislature. So again, it's a pretty cool thing. He's a, Keith is a well-respected procurement man in this state. A lot of people look to him for guidance, and he led this venture for a few years. He took a lot of punches. He aged a few years, but he could put this in his resume that he got the Senate Bill 1074 passed. So again, a huge kudos to him. You know, we're all proud of him. Again, it's pretty cool that we got the man here to make that happen. So it's pretty cool. Utility billing software, again, you've heard TrueBill, you've heard TruePoint. It's a success. We're utilizing it in full force. Utility billing division is managing it daily. I'll plant the seed now. I think Dale's in the room. Dale and his team have applied for a certain, a particular reward with this. I'm not going to take the steelhead's thunder, but maybe in a few months, he might be able to report back to us if we receive the award. But we're hoping that the city does. It's about innovative technology and utilizing TrueBill and asset management systems. So we're hoping that we receive an award for that. But I'll let him share that with you in the months to come. Another achievement we had was the comprehensive financial plan. It was our first one that we were able to develop as a city. We'll continue to develop it, improve on it, and present it to both executive branch and legislative branch annually. Again, more items that we had accomplished during the year. Transparency reporting tool. You, council, gave us a budget to acquire some software, and we did. We've successfully deployed OpenGov as our transparency tool. We've been getting a lot of interest in it from our citizens and business partners. So again, we had a successful launch there. Priority-based budgeting, a couple of weeks ago, we had a presentation to you there. We are starting those discussions about what we'll do as a city with that topic. In February, we delivered to you a updated revised budget, revenue budget report for your upcoming budget discussions. We started a new quarterly council update, you know. Hopefully, you're not getting too tired of me, but you're starting to see me more often. But we're, our goal with the quarterly updates is to give you pertinent information so you can make informed decisions on a weekly basis. The clean audit, again, February, our auditor presented to you a clean audit for fiscal '16. Again, something that we are very proud of in the finance department, and it's a goal of ours. And then, last but not least, we did survive fiscal year 2016 with limited casualties. We encountered a lot of change in '16, and I'm proud to say that the team stuck together and endured the pains and punishments. So again, big kudos to the '16 and the '15 and the team for sticking with the plan and sticking to each other and supporting each other. And with that, those are the achievements and accomplishments I just wanted to touch on for fiscal year 2016 and the last 12 months. So all in all, finance is very happy with the results we've provided to the city and the citizens since we've last presented to you. Goals and challenges. Again, customer service, you're going to see this everywhere. We're going to continue to improve on that. Accounting division, we're going to look at a concept called replacement fund. The replacement fund is a theory where we need to consider putting money away for aging infrastructure in the future. We're a young city, we're a young development, but at some point in time, the infrastructure's going to come due, and unfortunately, it's going to come due all at once. No, not all at once, but pretty steep. So we need to make sure we set up the future council and the future decision makers with a fund, hopefully. So we're going to start those discussions. We have policies, we have statements that we have to follow in the accounting world. Bank merger, I'm not sure if you're aware of this or not, but Bank of the Cascades did announce that they were, they're going to merge with First Interstate Bank. It's going to occur this summer. So finance department is going to be busy managing a bank merger, how we manage our accounts, how we manage our checking accounts, checks, things like that. Our credit cards are going to change. So we have that on our to-do list this summer. Again, we'll keep you in the loop on what's going on with that, but that's this summer. And again, another thing in accounting division is just to look at our constant processes and update them accordingly. The budget division, again, customer service, we're going to look at developing performance measures, something called centric reporting. We're going to look at the priority-based budgeting, which we presented to you a couple of weeks ago. And then, as a seed, we're going to be asking for some budget software, hopefully, in the near future. Because right now, Jenny manages the budget utilizing, I think, about 200 Word and Excel files to develop the budget on an annual basis. So we're looking at some software so we can, again, be efficient with technology rather than hiring employees. Utility billing division, the biggest project for them is going to be getting a grasp of their new tool, TrueBill, documenting processes, changing process for the next 12 months, getting everything tight and under control before we move on to anything new. And then, last but not least, we have purchasing division. As I stated earlier, they're going to be looking at some new bid software, some new purchasing software for you guys to consider next year. As you heard, there's some policy changing at the state level, so with that, we might have to look at our policies. And then, with those changes, we'll have to look at our processes and make sure all the departments are on the same page of how we need procurement to occur within the city on a daily basis. So following the agenda, again, this is my last topic of the evening or day, afternoon. Strategic plan objectives, finance department is the lead for three. The first one is in focus area number one, strategic growth. We also have an item in focus area number three, responsive government. And then, last, we have an item in focus area number five, which is culture, arts, and recreation. So the item in strategic or focus area number one is to create a growth management system to foster the growth of the city in alignment with the comprehensive plan. Within that, we have item number five. In general, it's to look at developing a possible fiscal impact model. Right now, the status is we're working with the mayor, working with department directors and council members to determine what the end solution is. What is the end product that we want so we can allocate the correct resources to this request? The next item we have is focus area number three, responsive government. Again, enhanced transparency. The item we have on there is number four, institute a priority-based budget. Again, you had the presentation a few weeks ago. Status update on that, again, we've introduced it. Now, we're discussing it at the executive level, executive branch level, and we'll report back to you with the next steps and the commitment that we, as a city, want to make. And then, last item is cultural arts and recreation. Strategic goal, letter A. You know, on this one, we need to evaluate available tools for financing recreation and entertainment facilities. This one, we're hoping to get done this fiscal year. It's a research project. We just work with the state and AIC and just put that in a document for us to have at our fingertips. So that one, we should get done this year. And with that, hopefully, it didn't take too long. There's the questions slide for Ty.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, and Keith, I, my last couple of votes of any consequence up here have been no votes where I've been alone. So I looked up the bill worried that it might have been my father was the only no vote against your bill. I was glad to see that that was not the case. So congratulations, and thank you for your hard work on that. And to the rest of the finance department, thanks for the hard work that you guys do, and I really appreciate how prompt you guys are to answer any questions that I have, and I assume the rest of the council has the same experience as well. So thank you for your work for us.
Appreciate the good work.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Todd, you mentioned that the customer service and utility billing seem to be the busiest section to some extent with needing more employees and such. And I was wondering if in the future, there might be some type of online directive for landlord tenants, since that seems to be a big time consumer of customer service representatives. I know other cities do have other ways of dealing with it. Is that anything like that in the future, since you're doing all this technology?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum, the question is a good question. We just had a roundtable about the renters' addendum and the renters' agreements about two months ago to determine which direction we want to go. So, and we did bring up using technology to see if we can get submissions via the website. Right now, our agreement is, it requires a notary. So that's the tough thing about it. You know, whether or not we can work with legal and determine if we can still accept renters' agreements or renters' addendums without a notary, that's a valid question. But again, we'll continue to look at efficiencies. The workload is the amount of it. You're correct. You know, whether or not we can utilize the technology to help, we'll definitely continue to look at that. I did plant the seed, we will be requesting one person in 2018 due to the increased growth and demands. But it's a valid question. We'll continue to always look at efficiencies. But right now, we did consider the automatic fillable document online, so we wouldn't have the manual, but it's the notary part that gets us in trouble. So we can work with legal to continue to look at that, to see if there's any way we can improve that for efficiency. But it's a very valid question, and we'll definitely take note of that.
Thank you. It seems that it would be, if you could do an electronic signature to make an offer on a $300,000 house, you should be able to pay your utility bill.
Definitely respectful. There's a lot of moving parts with working with escrow companies, title companies, aid accountants, make sure that we get the property in the right name.
Sure.
So there's still going to be a lot of paperwork to move because not everyone uses one set piece of information. But it's a very valid question, and we'll definitely take note of that. Thank you.
Thank you for your report.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Just reflection. Todd, another great report. The finance department has always been so receptive to get back to any questions I've ever asked, get it done timely. You guys have done such a great job of leading us, and I mean having to lead us at times because sometimes we get off kilter, and making sure that we keep these finances of the city like they are and like we want to continue to have. And you guys have always been ahead of the schedule, and I can't, I can't say enough about the finance department since I've been here. It's been truly a great, hard-working finance department, and I thank all of you guys.
Well, Mr. Byrd, I'd say thank you on behalf of the entire team. Again, we strive to make sure we deliver what you expect of us on a daily basis, so we appreciate the good work.
And I know you were trying hard to say, not say that everybody counts, but...
I appreciate you doing that.
I just could not go without having it said at least once. We appreciate everything you do. I think you and your team, Todd, go above and beyond on many facets, and not only in those day-to-day operational areas and setting policy and those kind of things, but also, you know, as far back as Rita goes, you've been part of the pulse of our community or our city employee community, where a lot of the energy, the traditions, and the celebrations seem to germinate out of finance. And certainly, you lead the way in helping us continue to keep a focus on the employees and make our culture here one that people enjoy as well. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, anything else from council?
Thank you very much.
Great job.
Okay, council, under 7B, in front of you, I've had a chance to talk to a couple of you about the strategic plan and, you know, where the line is between directional and that policy level versus operational and how we get the work done. I've kind of equated it to, we can ask to drive and meet up in Pullman, Washington, and all of us might take different routes of getting there. And certainly, where we want to make sure that we're all in alignment is more in the focus areas where council has traditionally only delved into, which is the 50,000-foot level. I think that the goals that support those focus areas are maybe the 40,000-foot level, but also one that we plan our objectives and our tactics, too. So wanted to kind of back up, make sure we're in alignment to the supporting focus areas and goals that will help us get to achieving the vision and mission of the city. And maybe focus on that so then we can put our work, our operational and work plans together to support these areas. There's nothing new in this.
Did you have anything else to say?
Pardon?
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Holy cow. What'd you do, have finance print this for you?
Um, yes. Certainly, I don't need any action today. We can to put it back on an agenda and seek any comments, and then we'll bring back a resolution.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Can you provide some clarity as to what action you're looking for from council?
I guess we, at one point annually, looked at our vision, mission, values, and focus areas from a council to make sure we continue to have the same sights. And certainly, that is, that's what's important, to know that we are in alignment with the vision of the, all the electeds, to make sure that these are supporting the vision and mission of the city and that there's not a new priority that perhaps we need to consider as a whole adding to or replacing. Maybe, maybe we think we're done in economic vibrancy, and it's time to replace that with another focus area.
A follow-up, Madam Mayor?
Uh-huh.
How does this new document pertain to the previous documents related to the strategic plan that we've been sent?
I guess it's more clarity in roles. The legislative and policy-setting role of city council is more the high-level view, and we want to make sure that what we do operationally supports that. But on that supportive aspect, certainly, as we have items that need, has budgetary implications, and as you saw today in bringing back... has budgetary implications and as, as you saw today in, in bringing back, um, an update to council on each of the departments, uh, strategic annual updates, they'll bring in some of those things that they're involved in in supporting those focus areas. And I will be coming in front of council to give, um, a semi-annual update to, um, where we are in moving the, the needle in, in these focus areas as well as the goals.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
As I look through this, the, the focus areas of the many layers of the strategic plan last adopted in January of 16, the focus areas and strategic goals are what's incorporated here, drilling down into greater detail, the objectives, and then the tactics, which are a little more, um...
They're more operational and, and, um, in nature.
And so that, those are removed at least from the strategic plan, or the request would be the strategic plan going forward. This is just memorializing the existing goals and existing already adopted, excuse me, focus areas and strategic goals. And it just removes...
Areas and strategic goals, yes.
Removes the objectives and removes the tactics, which were some of the operational detail that... Okay. So, Madam Mayor, there was, at the last discussion with Ms. Holman, when we were talking about, um, certain objectives might merge with others, certain might, certain ones might be deleted. Those wouldn't, the merger of those, for example, wouldn't be addressed at the council level. It'd be more of an operational decision whether or not certain objectives have been merged or met or resolved. Okay. The, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The plan that has previously adopted, which is much thicker, would become a much thinner policy guidance document. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Just clarifying.
Any, uh, any other questions at this point? And we'll set it, um, next week on the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I won't be here next week, and I'd really love to be here for the discussion.
Okay.
I will be here the rest of the year.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Is, uh, anybody else not going to be here next week? Because I'm not going to be here.
Oh.
I'm going to be in St. Luke's.
That's right. Um...
I mean, I could...
Well, we'll have, we'll have a quorum. We don't have to, to have this.
Yeah.
Um, will you, you gone the rest of the month?
No, no.
Okay. So you'll be back on the 25th?
And if things go, I might be here next Tuesday.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, we'll set it, um, for April 25th. And again, um, I would, um, I'm available for any questions that you might have between now and then.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Cavanagh.
Sorry, Dean. Madam Mayor, just for clarification, then, on the 25th, you're looking for council to adopt this new document, replacing the previous document that we've previously adopted.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and again, because this lays the directional foundation to make sure that as we go further into the, the details of accomplishing these, that we're all in alignment with, with this direction. Okay? Item 7C was requested by council to, um, put on a future agenda to discuss any, um, potential enhancements that a city council member might, might want to bring into the budget discussion and have considered as part of that process. So I am opening the mic up to any of you that have anything you want to add, discuss.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Thank you. Uh, I think Todd sent a, a brief email to all of us yesterday that captured the, the moment from our meeting, I think in February, where this brought up, when it came up. And my goal was only, I think it's fair that as, as we're asking the mayor to, to develop a budget, that she be aware of any ideas or suggestions or proposals that any of us have. Um, since that time, I've had the opportunity to engage a couple of departments on a couple of requests that I have and have found that it can go through the regular budget process and wouldn't necessarily need to be something, um, that is discussed here with, with one, um, specific suggestion that I wanted to share with you that really came out, um, from me, out of last week's somewhat lengthy meeting, where we heard from some of our citizens in South Meridian about the quality of their water. I think Kyle did a great job of articulating that as more homes would connect to that line, that, uh, the water quality would improve. But from a, a citizen standpoint, they believe right now that their water is bad. In fact, even a citizen saying that they're using bottled water. Um, in my previous role, when I worked for the mayor, when I worked for the city, we encountered a similar issue in another part of town. And, uh, a remedy for that particular citizen was to offer them a credit for the amount of water that they believe that they had used to clear their lines, something along the lines of 3,000 to 5,000 gallons, which equates to about $3 to $5. At that time, um, in order for that credit to be issued, it had to go before the mayor and, and council to approve. I'm not aware if that's still, um, business operations as, as usual. I think there's some opportunities to improve. But my, my goal on tonight, in adding this piece to the budget, was potentially a budget item that would include a fund that if our citizens believe their water quality, um, isn't acceptable to them, and they're able to prove that, that we would be able to, through operations, through the mayor and through, uh, the Water Department and Finance, be able to offer that credit. I didn't know if that was something that would need to come through, um, the Enterprise Fund, through the General Fund. I think from our citizens' perspective, they don't necessarily care what fund it comes out of, but I just think that it would be, um, a benefit that we could be able to provide. We can discuss it here. We can discuss it through the, the budget process. It was just something that I thought was worthy of sharing with all of you to at least ponder as we move through the budget-making process.
Certainly, I, I guess I would, um, work with Dell on, on what that potentially can look like. I, I will say that, um, our Water Department immediately followed up with the, the neighbors in Black Rock and, and found that there apparently are no, um, issues. So we're, we're not sure where the, the testimony came from, because we went to those who provided that testimony, and that is the response that we got. Um, certainly, we know that, um, as we flush, because of the, the constituents and our, the natural constituents in our, um, in our ground are, are such that they, they do cause some, a need to, to flush our, our pipes, that, that, that helps to minimize that. Um, but it, we can certainly have that conversation and, and see how many times we, we get those phone ca, phone calls, um, in today's, today's realm and, and see what we need to bring back.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I'm having a hard time wrapping my brain around what you just said, based on testimony that was so emotional last week, about six months' worth of brown water and pictures of bathtub filled with, um, you know, rust-colored water. So I, I don't know if there's another way to reach out, send a letter to them, or, I mean, if they've been, if, if they've truly been experiencing this for six months, like they said, they're probably at this point not going to call in to complain. They're just biting the bullet. So I think that, I mean, unless those, you said those specific people that made those claims were contacted and...
Our, our Water Department reached out, because certainly they pride themselves in, in their customer service and the quality of, of product that they deliver, and they wanted to better understand it. Um, and, um, they, they were equally confused. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say, dear.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, uh, just to add some clarification to maybe some of the confusion here, because we, as well, were a little bit confused after the testimony last weekend. But immediately, uh, following the council meeting and the concerns raised by some Black Rock, uh, citizens, uh, we engaged them the next day via phone calls. Uh, we contacted the original spokesperson that was up here, um, and found that really she had no particular concerns herself. The majority of the residents in that area have inline filtration, water softening systems and things, and that they, although had had occasional, uh, brown water complaints due to the, uh, you know, the settling and the low, uh, usage on that line that Kyle, I think adequately explained, that it was a periodic problem that they had had, and that there was another, uh, concerned party that had the bulk of the problem. Uh, we reached out to them as well, did not get the sense of, uh, concern. Uh, I think some of that was stemmed around the fact that they did, uh, have a complaint that was logged by the Water Department. Uh, they got a response. They weren't sure who they talked to. They weren't happy with the response. They had contacted DEQ. DEQ was very favorable to the fact that, hey, contact Meridian, they know what they're doing. Uh, we have great confidence in them and their ability to handle the situation. Um, and that, uh, we feel like that situation, uh, has been maybe overstated, uh, the concerns. But nonetheless, we want to take some, some operational actions. So we have, uh, indeed, uh, initiated that, that subdivision and area, and that, uh, long supply line has, uh, since been fully flushed as part of our flushing program. We've instituted a program because of that location that we will accelerate the flushing frequency to tell, move that, uh, that water in there. As, as Kyle mentioned, we have a very long supply line, very little consumption. Uh, so that'll assist in cleaning it out on a, on a quarterly basis as opposed to our annual flushing program. So we believe that that'll in turn improve the situation. Uh, we're looking at, and will probably institute, a PRV bypass system. We're right there on zone boundaries, and those zone boundaries will, um, allow us to keep a little bit of water moving in the system between Zone 5 and Zone 4. Uh, we think that'll also, uh, be sufficient to, uh, improve the circumstance. And then finally, as Kyle mentioned to you, we, uh, will be initiating the water, um, treatment facility for the well 28, uh, in the FY18 budget proposal. Uh, however, that will take a couple of years, but that is a, that is a high-volume well that we need to get into the, uh, system, and, uh, the water treatment, I think, will be the ultimate solution. So we took action, we did everything we could. We reached out to the citizens, and we think that, uh, the actions that we've taken are going to satisfy their needs. But, uh, yeah, we were, we were very concerned by the tone and the expression that was, uh, that was here that evening. Eight o'clock AM, I showed that video clip to the entire Water Department that next morning and said, "Uh, we've got an issue. Uh, let's go out and figure out what's going on here." And, and they did so, and, uh, we, we didn't find the, the magnitude of the problem that was, that was expressed here at, uh, at council that night, so...
That's great, thank you.
So, any other questions that I might entertain?
Thanks, dear.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
Okay, anything further on this item? Uh, future meeting topics. I, I have our upcoming events. Do the Right Day is all day tomorrow. Um, at 10:00 AM, we'll be at Meridian High School, reading the proclamation. 10:45 at Heritage Middle School. At 1:30 at Meridian Senior Center with Mayak and MSAB. And at 2:15 at Sienna Elementary. Uh, the YMCA Community Campaign kickoff is, uh, Thursday, uh, April 13th at 5:30. Uh, and several area Mayor's Walking Club. Friday, we'll be at Ponarosa from 10:30 to 10:45, and again at 2:30 to 2:45. Um, at Peregrine from 2:15 to 1:15. Um, Meridian Monday at April 17th at 6:00 PM. What's that? 6:00 PM? I'm not going to be there. Um, Mayor Tammy's Walking Club, oh, at Meridian Elementary, 11:55 to 1:00 PM. Oh, on Meridian Monday. Please join Ty and myself on Monday at 6:00 PM for Meridian Mondays.
Madam Mayor.
Ty.
Councilmember Cavanagh was there as part of our stroller gang this, yesterday.
He was.
With all four kids, despite wrecks and scrapes and whatnot, we did the entire four miles with two strollers and four kids. So if we can do it, then we can.
I know. I, I saw you and your wife on the corner of, um, Meridian and Cherry, so it was great. So we'd love to have you all come out and join us. I think you get wellness points to city employees, but love to have your support. Okay, item nine.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we go into executive order as per Idaho State Code 742061F.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adjourn into executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.